Good evening. This is John Ostrowski, Vice Chair, Board of Finance. Today is Thursday, August 19th, 2021. It is 6:00 PM and this is a meeting of the Board of Finance. We'll call it order and I will turn the floor over to Ken to read the intro for our hybrid meeting.
Thank you, John. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless you're speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title, if applicable, at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. Thank you. It's back to you, John.
Ken, thanks very much. I just want to confirm all the members who are in attendance. We'll go by alphabetical order and just answer the affirmative. Greg Benno?
Here.
Steve Kirsch?
Here.
Dane Kirsch-Navy?
Here.
Rebecca O'Donnell?
Here.
And obviously, I'm here. Members of staff here, we've got Ken Cullig for Selectmen?
Here.
Ron Bonavsky?
Yeah, I don't know what else. I'm here, Mr. Finance. We'll call you Mr. Finance.
Heidi, who is actually in charge of everything, Heidi Mead?
Here.
Our tax collector, Deb Heim?
Here.
And our Treasurer, Patrick O'Hara?
Here.
And we also have guest Joe Cobza, our Superintendent.
Thanks, John. How you doing?
Good, thanks. Welcome.
Can I just, do we need to make a note that Dane, Rebecca, and John are all remote?
Yes.
Yeah. So I guess I just did that.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that. So.
Yeah, I have to make sure the minutes record that as one.
Great. Second item is approval of the meeting minutes and voting record for July 15th, 2021.
Steve Kirsch, I move that we approve the meeting minutes and voting record for July 15th, 2021.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Who seconded? I'm sorry.
Greg Benno.
Okay. We just have to do that for the recording. All right. We'll do a roll call for approval. Greg Benno?
Hi.
Steve Kirsch?
Hi.
Dane Kirsch-Navy?
Hi.
Rebecca O'Donnell?
Hi.
And John Ostrowski say hi as well. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. First Selectmen's Communications. Ken, floor is yours.
Thank you, John. So the only thing I wanted to cover this evening, and I inserted a written update to this effect. So you've got it in your packet. It has to do with the American Rescue Plan Act. I reported earlier, as everyone knows, we received our first half of the distribution from the state that comes from the federal government in the amount of just under $2.9 million, We are, we are one of the towns that is category of non-entitlement for a smaller community. We're receiving a lot, you know, relatively small amount of funding as compared to some of the larger municipalities. So we are not required to submit extreme, you know, some of these cities have to present extensive plans and have reporting that is due imminently. Our reporting is not due until later on. As I've said before, we've been working hard, you know, Ron has as well, to kind of research and evaluate the guidance from the Treasury. We've been attending a lot of briefings. CCM has done quite a few of them with the National League of Cities. And just trying to make sure we have our arms around really, you know, the guidance document, it's things like 150 something pages. So it's, there's a lot to digest. I know that I've reported in a prior meeting that, and I know you're all aware, that we are prohibited from utilizing these funds for a tax decrease. We are also prohibited from replenishing fund balance. There's also prohibitions on using for pension payments and things like that. There are a lot, there are other broad categories that are allowable. And as I look through these, the first and top priority that I wanted to evaluate is utilizing these funds to protect the health of our fund balance for the benefit of our community and of our taxpayers. And one of the allowable uses of these funds is for revenue replacement. The, the guidance allows every municipality to determine a base year of revenue, which would have been the last fiscal year prior to the pandemic. And then from there, you can assume a minimum of a 4.1 annual revenue increase. That is a standard number that they throw out to everyone, which will high, but, but it is what it is. That is the federal standard. And so then you can then take your projected revenue at the 4.1 increase, 4.1% increase, and then the difference of what you actually generated in revenue is categorized as, can be categorized as revenue loss due to the public health emergency. So Ron has gone out there and plugged everything into a calculator that was provided by the Government Finance Officers Association to kind of, you know, churn through these numbers. And the, the short story is that the revenue reduction number that is calculated, you know, exceeds the amount that we've received today, right? So we could categorize or claim 100% of this nearly $2.9 million as revenue loss. So where do we go from there? How can you utilize that? The guidance from Treasury states that revenue replacement funds can be utilized for the provision of government services on a go-forward basis. So if we utilize this revenue source, which was not budgeted, it was not incorporated in the fiscal year '22 budget, we would then most likely avoid the need to utilize the majority of the $3 million that is currently appropriated from unassigned fund balance in the current fiscal year budget. So that is, that is my, in my, my mind, a recommended course of action. We still have specific recording, reporting requirements that are outstanding and guidance on mechanically how that needs to be reflected in unis. And Ron is, is working, he's been working with our auditors. He's been working with GF, GF-OA. Our first report is due at the end of October. We expect to have more details on that by that time. So at your September meeting, we'd like to kind of report back in more specificity as to where we are with all this, but I wanted to kind of just get it, share with, you know, this primarily being a finance, Board of Finance issue. I wanted to make sure that this board was kind of aware of our thought process at this point and just kind of, you know, tell you where we're at. So with that, that's really my update. Any questions about that or comments or happy to?
It's good news.
I think, yeah, I mean, that's how, that's how I, that's how I read it. I think, you know, again, you know, we can't go back and, we can't go back and replenish what we've already utilized, what, what, anything that's been utilized, but we can avoid taking the vast majority that we had, you know, we had thought we were going to have to do to achieve this year's budget. So.
So John, if I might, Steve Kirsch?
Sure.
So do we, do we have a view for what the fund balance would look like if we didn't utilize the $3 million in this year's budget as we had planned? Do we know what the, what the?
Well. Where it stand, where?
Where it would stand?
I can, I don't have it at my hand. I can.
I mean, we already know that we'll, we'll be in a better position than we expected from last year's budget because we had appropriated $8 million. We knew we weren't going to need all of it, right? Because tax revenue came in better, right? So, but yeah, Ron and I have talked, he has to, there's a lot of moving parts still. So I think he's got to get all that finalized and, and then, yeah, I mean, the next thing would be to run a, run a new projection.
Okay. I mean, that's fine. And that's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
There are just too many pieces to, to.
Yep.
For me at least, to guess what it might be.
And again, our fiscal year '21 numbers are not finalized yet. So that's part of it.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions for Ken? No, looks good. Thanks very much, Ken. That's a great update. Good news.
Thanks. Thank you.
Public participation. Ron, did you get anything written in from anyone prior to our meeting?
Did not.
Okay. So then we'll just open up for public participation. Anyone who is dialed in, listening in, that would like to participate, just state your name and where you're from and we'll give you the floor.
Please remember to unmute yourself if you are desiring to speak.
We'll ask one more time. Anyone who would like to speak, unmute and please announce yourself. Okay. I guess we're doing a good job. No one has anything to participate with. Unfinished business, next item, discussion of three-year budget model. I know last month we talked about trying to get some information from Newtown as a model. I don't know, Ron, if you had any time to do that, but it's not something that was urgent. But if you can give us any feedback on that?
Yeah. So I did, I did not have a chance to speak with the Finance Director. I spoke with the Deputy in Newtown. They actually do a 10-year projection. And unfortunately, myself and the Finance Director of their alternate vacation week, so we weren't able to hook up. They did report about a month, month and a half back to the Board of Finance for a day with a 10-year projected model, you know, based, you know, assuming increases, you know, each year. But so it was a little, it was probably a little different. It was just done on, I think it was just done on an Excel spreadsheet. But that's basically all they, I haven't had a chance to talk with the Director.
Okay. Thank you. That's, we'll roll till next month's meeting, I'm sure. New business, we have none. So we'll go on to review of the financial reports, the year-to-date budget report. Anyone have any questions, comments, concerns?
Again, we're a, you know, we're a month in at this right now.
So I'm sure everything's very accurate. So. Hearing nothing, we can move on to our tax collector for an update.
Okay. Everyone should have the report. We are doing slightly above last year. Our total collections at the end of July 31st was 47.8% compared to last year, 45.9%. So our numbers are slightly higher. I just wanted to give an update since then that we're over 50% on the real estate. We're, I know personal property looks low there, but we are now at 53% for personal property. And motor vehicle, we're at 65% as of today. So our numbers are looking real good. I don't know why motor vehicle is so high, but we don't question one type of product. The only question when we have less.
They're paying the whole bill.
They're paying the whole bill.
I guess. I did.
Yes. Most people pay the bills in full versus only the half. And I think the real estate is high because we have a lot of new owns and new owners coming into town and there are a lot of bests and the things. So we're looking good. And that's where real estate should be at 50%. Not many people pay their bills in full for real estate. So we're looking pretty good. That means our interest might be a little bit lower than we anticipate because everyone is paying. Yeah, anyone have any questions?
No questions. All right. Move on to our Treasurer.
So you'll notice that you do not have a Treasurer's report in your packet. There was an unanticipated personnel matter. Nothing really new to report in terms of what's going on with interest rates, state or federal. Ron and I did work together, along with Heidi, to go over the financial picture, the cash flow. And we just are in the process of picking up $24 million worth of 90-day CDs. Newtown Savings Bank has a limit of $8 million per category, category being 30-day, 60-day, 90-day. So last week, they did a 90-day, $8 million CD. This week, they're going to roll over a 90-day, $8 million CD. And next week, they'll buy a third 90-day. We were originally offered an interest rate of .15% and I kicked and screamed and hollered a little bit and they bumped it up to .25, uh, .2. That's, that's everything I got for you.
0.2 for all three?
Yes.
Nice job being the enforcer, getting us a good rate there, Patrick.
Thank you.
General Fund Budget Report. Any questions or comments on that?
Rebecca O'Donnell, I had a question in reviewing that. So there was a line, let me just find it real quick, under police radio. Didn't, weren't we, weren't they buying, replacing equipment? I just wanted, that, that percentage used looked really low to me. I thought that, that was planned, like a technology replacement. And I, I just wondered if that was still happening.
Yeah, it is, it is happening. And I see. So you're, you're seeing 33,000 available?
Yeah.
You know, I think, I, I think I may know the answer to that, but I'm going to, I'm going to footnote that with, we need to verify this. It's part of the, we, we budget a maintenance contract for the communication system. Because we have a brand-new system, I think we have a year of warranty without full cost. And that may be why this is like this, but the number seems similar, like 38 sounds similar to what we used to pay Norcom, Ron, here. So it could, that could be the answer to that. I mean, the, the radio upgrade that you're referring to was a capital project, Rebecca, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't have hit here at all.
Okay. That was going to be my next thing because I'm not sure with the general ledgers, where everything gets, you know, categorized.
Right.
Okay.
But I guess, Ron, we can get an answer for you at the next meeting. Unless there's a timing, unless there's a timing issue with something that just hasn't hit, but.
I don't see anything encumbered, so.
Yeah.
Okay. That was it for me on that part.
Any other questions? All quiet. All right. So we can go on to public school activity statements.
Again, John, if I could just speak for a minute, the, the, the fund activity statement for the public school is rolled into the general fund for the town as a whole. So if I could actually step back and go back to the year-to-date budget report. If you look on page one of the year-to-date budget report, you'll see that the $8 million right now in fund balance, assigned fund balance, doesn't look like it's going to need to be used. And if you go to page three, the, these numbers are not final, but we're, we'll likely be break even or have a surplus once they're final. That's what we're looking at, without utilizing any of the fund balance, as Ken had mentioned earlier. So anyway, to go back to the, to the public school, you know, right now, you're looking at us, we're looking at a surplus of almost 1.9 million. It was discussed at the Board of Ed meeting, you know, there was some concern, is that going to look bad? You have to remember that budget, as the town budget, you know, was prepared pre-COVID and then we entered a new reality this past year. So we were operating in an environment that was not, you know, indicative of the budget that was passed. So it's, and you know, when the, when, when you guys, as you recall, when you put the budget together and put that $8 million in there, there was a concern, hey, are the tax get payers going to feel like they were overtaxed? And the reality there is they weren't because the fund balance was put into the budget and appropriated. So the, the fact that we end up with a surplus, well, end up underbudgeted, overbudgeted in revenues and underbudgeted in expenditures covers the fund balance that was appropriated. So it was actually a well-prepared budget. Well, it was, it was, it was passed at referendum and approved by the Board of Finance. So that's, that's pretty much trying to tie a bow around that. Again, these numbers aren't final, John, but I don't think they're going to move in a, in a bad direction from here because we still have some more POs to close out on both sides.
Yeah, it looks good. Yeah. Was there anything you wanted to add?
So John, while, while we're, not, not from a budget statement, but since the Superintendent is here and there was no, no update on enrollment or in our packet as there was last month, I would like the Superintendent, for all those people who didn't hear, the enrollment and the additional staffing that was reported to the Board of Education at their Monday meeting, because I think it's important that we understand what's transpired since our last meeting. So I'd like to request that Joe address that.
Thanks a lot, Steve. Absolutely. Yep. You know, we've seen an increase, I apologize, I'm having some computer issues. So I can't get, I can't get on my other computer and have all this stuff right in front of me. But you know, when we last reported at the Board of Finance meeting, we were looking at, at numbers at all our elementary schools. We're, we're pretty close to those numbers now. I think at the last meeting I reported there was going to be, what we're seeing is an increase in students. Interestingly, you know, if, if all the kids who are in what we call the enrollment school, so those are people that are in the process of enrolling, if they all enroll, I think it's somewhere north of a 4.2, 4.3, 4.4% increase in total enrollment for the year. Interestingly, you know, that is mostly all contained in the elementary schools. You know, as of the other night, you know, Jackie Hollow was actually down one student. Bassett was up, I think like eight students. So all of that was concentrated at the elementaries. Obviously, a couple of the, the biggest hits were in the earlier grades. And you know, I suspect, you know, a lot of folks may have kept their kids out of kindergarten last year. And I also know that, you know, we've seen quite a bit of transients from, you know, some of the metropolitan areas, definitely into Monroe. So, you know, at the last meeting, you know, we were estimating about 355 kids at Monroe Elementary. At Monday's Board of Ed meeting, I was showing, we have 357 registered right now with nine in process to still be enrolled. Stepney Elementary, 447 at the last Board of Finance meeting. 443 currently enrolled with 16 in process. So that, that 447 will probably go up to 459 roughly. And then at Font Hollow, our biggest of the schools, I was showing 645. We currently have 637 with 16 kids in process. And that in process was as of Monday. I didn't update it for today. So about 651. You know, that required us to go out and get some additional staff. I mean, you know, as I said at the last meeting, our assumptions when the budget was made was that, you know, we were hoping that, you know, population was going to stabilize and it, and it bumped up and it bumped up in the elementaries. You know, that required us to go out and hire a, four new elementary teachers. You know, two kindergarten teachers and in essence, two first grade teachers, but there was some moving, movement around. So it actually turned out to be a third grade and a fourth grade teacher that we hired with other people moving within the schools. You know, and it, and it, you know, with the increase in enrollment as well, you know, we've also, that also then starts to put a strain on some of our ancillary staff. So, you know, we've been looking at paraeducators or behavior techs to be able to support the classrooms. Clearly not at the, you know, a level of expense as a certified staff member. But, you know, it has, it has pressures in other places. One of the other places we're seeing really significant pressures, okay, you add two, you know, two sections to a school, you know, it's really putting a strain on our, what we call our specials teachers at the elementary school because they have to, you know, our gym teachers, our music teachers, our art teachers, they go in and they do lessons for those classes. Right now, we have three different music teachers in the district servicing Font Hollow to make sure that all those students receive the program they're supposed to get. You know, so there's a lot of that. And that creates, that creates some inefficiencies because, you know, when they travel, they lose time. That's, you know, basically almost like two periods of classes that they can't teach between traveling to and from a, a school. So, but thanks for the questions, Steve.
Thank you, Joe. So, so John, my, my concern obviously is the impact on the budget. And it's, it is, in my mind, too early to talk about how we pay for that, these additional staff. We could theoretically use some of the money that they'd be returning. We could in money from our reserve from special ed because special ed is also growing. My point that I wanted to bring out tonight is I think we need to figure out how we're going to help the Board of Ed to fund that without the Board of Ed going into, to spending freezes and that kind of stuff. We've been lucky, if you will, in the last few, in the last couple of years not to have to do that. And I really don't want the Board to have to return to what had been a steady number of years where accounts were being frozen to pay for budget shortfalls in various accounts for various reasons. So I just wanted to get that out on the table and, you know, put it on our agenda for another meeting to talk about what options we have to help them, you know, cover these costs, which they in fact did call out in their budget as exposures. So while they had to pull the trigger, none of this is an actual surprise. So I just wanted to go on, on the record with that. So again, thanks, Joe, for the information.
So John, this is Rebecca O'Donnell.
Oh, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just throw a caution to the wind on our involvement in that because, you know, we don't have jurisdiction, if you will, over the Board of Ed budget.
No, that's an accurate statement. We can't, we can talk about shortfalls and funding opportunities, but we can't tell them what to do with their money. That's absolutely correct. And as you know, Steve, we work hand-in-hand with Joe and his, and his team, which is now Ron, which is, he's been on our team for a long time. So we really don't have any surprises and we, we do work hand-in-hand to try and sort through issues like that. But there's no downside to keeping it on the table as a discussion item to go forward. But we would look for Board of Ed for direction of what they think they need or don't need in this regard. We can't go and get ahead of the discussion and tell them what we think they should do or not do. We need to hear what they plan to do or not do before we can do anything.
Yes, I completely agree.
Okay.
So if they come back and say they want to freeze accounts, that's fine. I would be prepared to fund them rather than have them freeze accounts. That's just my position on how to deal with it. Whether they need our help is a different question.
If, if you want to write a personal check, I'm sure Town Council will accept it on behalf of the Board of Ed.
John, it's Rebecca O'Donnell again. I did have a question for either, not Ken, Ron or Joe, and just wanting to. or Joe, and just wanting to know, with the Cafeteria in Sedexo, last year, there was a risk of about $200,000, and I've not heard an update on where that landed. So I was curious as to how that all balanced out by the end of the year.
So, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Ron. Yeah, so we were able to, let me see if I can find the line item. We, the Board did have to cover some of the shortfall, but it was, it was significantly mitigated from, a good job was done mitigating it. So.
Yeah, it was, I don't think Sedexo's called out as a line, because I've searched, but it's probably in here somewhere.
Yeah, I could, it was, Ron, I remember, we, I want to say it was in the $50,000 range.
Yeah.
I can get you, I can, I don't know, if we want to take a five-minute recess, or I can have the number for you next meeting?
I think that's.
Yeah, I think it was in the $50,000 range, Rebecca, and I can confirm that next meeting.
Okay. All right, that's great news, because that was looming around us, you know?
And it was covered, the Board had to cover a part of it, but, you know, the mitigation strategies helped significantly.
Perfect. Awesome. Okay, good. And then my only other question was on stipends, and that looked, that came in at like 85%. So I was just questioning, because, you know, I thought most were canceled or put on hold, but maybe there was a lot that was able to get done, and I just was looking for commentary around that percentage as well.
Yeah, most of the, most of the stipends ran last year. There was very few. The year before, the whole, you know, obviously, the whole last third of the year, you know, we didn't get any of those stipends. But last year, you know, most, a lot of those stipends, I think the bulk of those are probably in athletics, and most, you know, just about every sport ran last year, with the exception of football. And actually, that ran in a seven-on-seven format, not a national format. So, you know, there were still some stipends paid out there. So most of our, most of our clubs, and just about all of our athletics had some sort of a season last year.
Oh, good. Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Great questions. Any other questions or comments on anything before we move for an adjournment? All right, another good meeting in the record books. If I get a motion to adjourn.
Steve Kirsch, motion to adjourn.
Great. Thanks very much, everybody.